All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. If you'd please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And Teresa Lee, please call roll.
Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCorsey.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Wales.
Here.
Thank you. All right. Counsel, as you can see, we have a very full audience tonight, at least for the first section of our agenda under announcements, proclamations, and presentations. So I'm going to move over to the podium so we can get started with all of these. All right. First on the agenda this evening is an item counsel that we have not had for many, many years. And we felt like the time was right to bring it back. And that is providing recognition for our police officers who do amazing things in the line of duty. And so I'm going to ask Chief Pearson to come up and provide a little bit of background on what we're going to be doing this evening. And they just keep on coming.
All right. Well, like Mayor Backus has stated, this is something that we've used to do quite often here at City Council years and years ago. And we've gotten away from it. And I think one of the reasons why we got away from it is one of the things you'll understand and learn about police officers are that they are humble. And they don't want a lot of attention. It's tough to get them here. They're here because I told them they had to be. Right? But it's time that we do start publicly recognizing for all the good work that goes on in this agency. And it happens every day. This particular incident was actually captured by Officer Sadio's video cam that's held on his uniform. And I believe we're going to watch this video.
Yes, we are.
As well. But what you're going to witness today is the giving of the Life Saving Medal. We have several medals within the agency. And this one is called the Life Saving Medal. And our policy indicates that it shall be awarded to the department personnel for acts that meet all of the following criteria: when the acts were personally performed by the officer, when they affirmed by the competent medical authority an individual saved a human life or prolonged a life beyond the day of extraordinary circumstances. And if you haven't seen the video or you've seen some of the actions of the officers that received this medal, I say it's nothing short of extraordinary. And one of the things you're going to be amazed by is what I refer to as the calm and professionalism that you see on this video. You know, these officers, as far as I'm concerned, haven't been here very long. Although they've been here a long time. I've been here a long, long time. But these officers here, for the amount of experience they have, to watch what they did and see what they did is unbelievable. You would thought they'd have been here 35 years. So I'm very proud of these guys. And so with that...
All right. Let's see if I can handle the technology here. All right. So as was put on the Auburn Police Department Facebook page, this can be a little bit disturbing. There is nothing graphic. And faces are blurred out. But it is something that I think you will be incredibly impressed with on this life-saving mission that our officers put forth. Yeah, I think it comes up on here.
I got it. I got it. If you grab me another one. Breathe, buddy. Breathe. 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 If you got one more. He's got one dose in him.
Narcan?
Yeah. Breathe. Come on, buddy. Breathe.
Second dose?
Yeah, second. Breathe. Breathe. How many Narcan's have you given? One. Breathe. There you go. Breathe. Good.
Okay, good?
Good.
Just wait for it. Yeah. All right. Stay clear of patient. Make sure your legs aren't touching them.
Yeah. Keep breathing, bud. Breathe.
No shock. Keep going. So no shock?
Yeah. Yeah, no shock. There you go. Breathe. Breathe. There you go. Yeah. You can just go straight that way.
Yeah. Want us to move him?
Hey, Wilkie, want to grab his shoulders to go straight that way? Breathe.
Yeah, let's go that way.
Fuck out of his legs. Yep. Two doses Narcan.
I got it, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
So what you saw was four of our officers providing dosing of naloxone and also providing CPR until the medics could arrive. And they saved that young man's life. Two doses of naloxone or Narcan, which they did with expertise as well as the CPR. And I couldn't be any prouder of these officers and every officer that we have in the Auburn Police Department because of the incredibly professional work that they do. They do it with compassion. They do it with dedication. And as you can imagine, they don't always see people in their best light. They work really hard to make sure that the first interactions that officers have with individuals are positive ones. But that is not always a possibility. And they put their lives on the line every single day, not knowing what they are going to come upon. And we also have many of the family members in the audience tonight of those officers. And I want to give you my personal gratitude for allowing your loved one to be a part of the Auburn Police Department and to do what they do every day. We know that it takes a family in order to allow them to do the work that they are so passionate about. But you put in an awful lot as well. And so I want to say thank you to you as well and give you a round of applause. And Chief, I think you have some awards to give out.
I do. All right. First, I'd like to read the citation that's associated with all four of theirs. They have their individual citations along with the medal. But I'm going to read basically how it will read officially. It says, "On January 11, 2019, at 12:46 hours, you responded to the report of an unconscious adult male who was not breathing normally in the parking lot of the Safeway at 101 Auburn Way South. You were advised that the male was lying in the parking lot, turning blue, and had an inhaler located on the ground next to him. While you were en route to the location, the reporting party had begun unassisted CPR. Each of you arrived at 12:48 hours and without hesitation took over life-saving measures on the male subject. You knew at this point that this is a drug overdose and needed to act fast. Working as a team, you administered two rounds of naloxone, performed CPR, and applied an automatic external defibrillator. You continued these efforts until Valley Regional Fire Authority and King County Medic One arrived to assist. VRFA and King County Medic One took over the care for the male subject who eventually regained consciousness. Based on the documentation from the medics who were on the scene, it was confirmed that your actions kept the male subject viable until Valley Regional Fire Authority and Medic One arrived and could take over. Your actions contributed to the successful outcome and helped save this man's life. The male involved in this incident contacted the Auburn Police Department after the event. He had come to the area to care for his addiction. He has made a complete medical recovery and has since entered into a treatment program. Based on your actions that night, as well as your compassion and professionalism, you are hereby awarded the Auburn Police Department's Life Saving Medal and recognition for your actions that saved the life of an Auburn resident. Your action exemplifies the core values of this department and serves as a model for all officers." Thank you. I would like to say one thing is that three of these officers have already received one of these Life Saving Medal awards. And so they will receive the ribbon that goes onto their Class A uniform with the star. And Officer Bateman, this is his first time receiving this award. So once again, I'm very proud of you guys and appreciate what you do. So I think we want to congratulate the council.
Counsel, yes. If you would please go forward and accept the appreciation of counsel. Ladies and gentlemen, I think they deserve a huge round of applause.
Hey, you guys aren't done. We need a quick picture.
Okay.
Counsel, do you want to come on down too? And we'll get everybody in.
Well, no, I just want to make sure we weren't hiding anybody. That... All right. Go forward. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a few more coming up. Family, if any... Don't go anywhere. We've got some family members that want to take photos as well. All right. Thank you so much. Do you want to say their names?
Yeah. You know what? I cannot believe through all this fiasco, you know, they did work as a team. But I do need to recognize that the officers who received it is Officer Rin Kapule, Michael Bateman, Matt Wilkinson, and Stanley Sadio. So thank you, guys.
And if you're on Facebook, you probably see our bicycle officers quite a bit. They are out... While they have a closer interaction, in some cases, with our residents and visitors, all of our officers take great care in ensuring that they do have positive interactions with people in our community. So thank you much. And if you have not liked the Auburn Police Department Facebook page, I encourage you to do so so you can see all that they are doing in this community. They are providing updates on that Facebook page. Some of them are quite humorous. We have some wonderful senses of humor in the police department because, as you can imagine, that is a bonus trait to have at difficult times. But I encourage you to do so because you will be kept apprised of all of the things going on and also get a little bit of humor as well. All right. Next, we are going to move on to another exciting situation here in Auburn. Thank you, officers. And family, we understand if you don't want to stay for the whole event, we will not take it personally. Next, we have the Auburn Mountain View High School Cheer Team. Ladies, if you would like to come up, please. You can be on all sides, too. That's okay. All right. So ladies and gentlemen, counsel, please welcome our Auburn Mountain View High School Cheer Team. We are excited, yes. We are really excited to recognize your amazing accomplishments for this year. They're back from a big win at Nationals in Orlando, Florida. And we want to honor them tonight for their winning season and their winning spirit. So here's what our Auburn Mountain View High School Cheer Team of Champions has accomplished. Undefeated season at WIAA State Qualifiers. State Champions WIAA Medium NT Traditional. State Champions WIAA Small Game Day. National High School Cheerleading Championship, second place in the nation. I think that deserves some applause. And it was just announced they have been awarded the 4A WIAA State Academic Award. This means they have the top GPA of all 4A cheer teams in Washington State. And in addition, they're a full team, not only of leaders in the school, but in our community. They're genuinely nice young ladies. And they mentor so many in their schools and in the community. In addition to their sports talents, they carry themselves with integrity, character, and an amazing work ethic. They are a family that loves one another. These cheerleaders are truly deserving of all that they have been awarded this year. And we wanted to provide them with our recognition as well. And it says exactly what I was reading. The city of Auburn is excited to recognize your amazing accomplishments this year with the list of accomplishments that we just read off. And so I am going to apologize in advance. If I mispronounce a name, please let me know so I can say it properly. Captain Taylor Altic. Congratulations. No, just stay right where you are. Sierra Zanow. Did I say it? Elizabeth Ins.
She's not here. I can take her.
Okay. Thank you. Ava Claire Anderson. Caitlin Barbara Burridge. Isabel Zanow. Chantel Harms. Malina LeBoigne. Lily Hanley. Kendra Lewis. Sadie Alfry. Kylie Alfry. Caitlin Goodrich. Cameron Ketchum. Coach Shanna Biggs.
She's also not here.
She's not here either. Okay. Hi. Coach Caitlin Hanley. And I think we had others. Let's see. There was a list. This includes four other varsity cheerleaders. Bailey Ketchum, Paula Chang, Liz Gutierrez, and Jocelyn Earhart. Is that correct? All right. So ladies, do we want to do photos? Well, let's see. Why don't you go through and accept the appreciation of counsel as you saw our police officers do? And then we'll all gather down in front for a photo. Let's give them a round of applause. And family, feel free to come forward if you want to take photos.
Great job.
Hey, Liz, what's going on? How's it doing?
Congratulations.
Yes. Do a pyramid or something.
Hold up here. Come down and check going in with the... Everyone.
Shanna.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we still got... Okay. Everybody got those that wanted them? All right. Ladies, congratulations. Forward to forward. I think somebody has it. Yeah. I think so. Yes. Thank you very much. And the audience begins to thin. Thank you very, very much. Families, thank you for all that you do to allow your young ladies to be successful. All right. We also have a proclamation tonight for Theater in Our Schools Month. And I know that we have Anna Van Vliet and Emily. But is there anybody else that wants to come forward while we read the proclamation? All right. So I'll read the proclamation. And then I'm going to ask each of you to introduce yourselves and if there's anything that you have to say. Okay? Great. All right. Mayor's proclamation. Whereas the arts, including theater, dance, music, and visual arts, are defined as a core subject in Washington State's definition of basic education and considered an essential component of the complete and balanced education for all students. And whereas learning in and through theater arts enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, imagination and creativity, discipline, alternative ways to communicate and express feelings and ideas, and cross-cultural understanding, which supports academic success across the curriculum as well as personal growth outside the classroom. And whereas the arts transform our schools into havens of creativity and exploration, places where students want to learn, teachers want to teach, and all members of the learning community are more engaged and motivated. And whereas the city of Auburn has always been a supportive place for the arts, and now therefore I, Nancy Backus, mayor of the city of Auburn, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as Theater in Our Schools Month and advocate for support of the arts and theater education in our schools and community and recognize the important role of arts in education for all students dated this 18th day of March 2019. Give that to you. And let's have you introduce yourselves. And if any of you want to say anything, please do. And come up to the podium because the microphone will pick it up for recording.
Hi, I'm Anna Van Vliet. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Backus and the City Council for welcoming us this evening. As representatives of the Auburn High School Theater Department, Troop 17, we are here tonight because we know firsthand what a dramatic impact school theater programs have on students. Theater in Our Schools Month is an opportunity for us to spread awareness about the many benefits of arts education. Not only do theater arts help students develop confidence and creativity, but students involved in the arts are proven to be more academically successful than their peers. According to the College Board, in 2015, students who took four years of arts classes in high school scored an average of 92 points higher on their SATs than students who only took one half a year or less. The National Endowment for the Arts found that students who... Found that high school students who earn few or no arts credits are five times less likely to graduate than students who earn multiple arts credits. I believe Michelle Obama said it best. The evidence is crystal clear. Kids who get involved in the arts have higher grades, higher graduation rates, and higher college enrollments. Theater teaches students to work hard, take risk, and overcome challenges, preparing them for success in school and in their future careers. Patricia Ron explains that only 15% of job success comes from technical skills and knowledge. The other 85% comes from well-developed soft skills, things like the ability to listen, artistic sense, nonverbal communication, enthusiasm, and storytelling. This is why we need theater in our schools, so that students will have a sanctuary where they can learn, grow, and express themselves. And so that all students can develop the skills they need to achieve amazing things. Thank you for having us this evening. And thank you for supporting theater in our schools.
And if each of you would like to introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name is Emily Van Vliet.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Jordan.
My name is Whitley Cunningham.
My name is Allison Oste.
And ladies, if you would all like to go forward and accept the appreciation of counsel. And then we'll do photos again with your group. How's that? All right. All right, counsel, come on back down for photos.
This is our night for exercise.
Yes. Yes. All right. Thank you, ladies, very much.
Hunter Hyden was a member of the theater group. A long time ago.
All right. We will move on to appointments. Airport Advisory Board. City Council to confirm the appointment of Joseph Nessel to the Airport Advisory Board for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Joseph Nessel to the Airport Advisory Board to expire December 31, 2021.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
Yes, Joseph has a remarkable resume. He has a whole bunch of transportation experience, and he's very active in the community in his HOA organization, so he's going to help our Airport Advisory Board immensely. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment of Joseph Nessel to the Airport Advisory Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, Teresa, do we have any agenda modifications this evening? All right, we will move on to citizen input. We have no public hearings this evening, so we will move to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Doug Happy. In case you didn't know, my address is 420 East Main, as I am the Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce here in Auburn. And as you probably know, the Chamber's been meeting with the city on a regular basis for several years, and many times the mayor has challenged us to bring our input to the City Council on things that we think are important. I don't know that we've ever done that, but we want to. So we'd like to request a meeting in order to discuss some of the fiscal issues that are coming across the City of Auburn and get businesses' input to the council for that. That's our request.
Excellent, and we will be scheduling that meeting, so thank you Doug for coming forward and sharing, doing as we request and getting the Chamber involved in those issues in the city that do have an impact on our businesses. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final time, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Right, please give your name and address for the record.
I'll try to speak clearly, sometimes it's difficult. Virginia Haugen, 25003 R Street, Southeast Auburn. I'd like to thank Mayor Backus for allowing me to see some things at City Hall tonight that I've never seen before. I got three cheerleader girls at home, and by the time they were 10, they wanted nothing more than to be cheerleaders. And we are very proud of our kids from Riverside. I have never seen our theater kids honored at City Hall, it was wonderful, thank you very much. I have had many personal experiences. Sometimes I was reprimanded by knowing what was going on at the scene of a crime, maybe it was only a fistfight, maybe it was a life-saving operation. My friend died in the line of duty, he was a former Auburn police officer. I know what these families go through. Thank you so much for honoring these young men, and I call them young because they're all very, even the chief is very young to me, but I know what these guys go through. I know how rigorous the training is, and I know how professional and how quickly they have to react. And I had a discussion with my friend this morning about the things that maybe a police officer cannot do anymore. And right now, I feel very proud to be here and to help to honor these gentlemen that were here. Thank you very much, Nancy Backus. However, my neighbors and I are worried, we're worried about our taxes. I have many retired friends and relatives in this city, we've all been here a long, long time. I worry that some of my friends and neighbors may lose their homes because they can't afford to pay the taxes. I want young people, we've got a couple of fairly young people out there, I want them to have an opportunity to own their own home. But if we can't pay the property taxes, and we can't pay the utility bills, I served on the City Council for a total of six years, I know where the money is going. My records requests are serious requests, when someone asks me a question and I don't know the answer, I know that I can come to City Hall and do a records request and get an answer. Think about what you're doing, because this, this is not just seven council members, this is our whole community trying to survive here in Auburn. And when I come down Auburn Way and I see a woman sitting by herself on the sidewalk with all her belongings around her, I want to help her, but I can't. We had better start looking at the fiscal responsibilities of council members, not just the mayor, the council members. You are our governing body, and we hope you'll get it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Ma'am, yeah, you need to come forward, give your name and address for the record if you'd like to speak.
My name's Carol Walker, I've lived here all my life.
And your address, please.
What?
Your address.
Oh, my address now is 1107 A Street Northeast in Auburn, that's the Reserve, low income. Well, I just moved there, and I'm on the fifth floor, and right below my apartment, these great big 18-wheelers, sometimes pulling a second trailer, come down this little road that's got a median right down the middle of it, and it's all residential on this side, and then the trucker people are over there. And I'm wondering if it's their phone apps that are telling them to come down that little road, because that should be a residential road? And if they just go a little further to 14th and turn right, they could get there just the same as going down, I think it's 10th. So I just wondered if somebody, you guys could address that and figure out what's going on there, and, I mean, because it's all, you know, the villas are there with little kids, the nurseries over here with little kids, and a big tanker truck came down there pulling two, two loads of gasoline, I guess, and it just wakes me up all night, because they usually drive in there at night. Every hour on the hour, there's a truck under my window going down our little road instead of going down a bigger road. So that's what I wanted you to consider.
Thank you. Ingrid, can you address that as far as the classification of that road?
Yeah, I believe that that road is actually, it's either a collector or a minor arterial, so truck traffic on that road is typical for that type of roadway classification, and I know there's a lot of traffic for the Lowe's building that is also along that road, their delivery location is on that side as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we will move on to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks, and may give their recommendations to the City Council if any, and right now we have one ad hoc committee, that is Finance, and Chair is Councilmember Wales.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember De Corsi and myself had an opportunity to review the 160 pages of vouchers, and really do appreciate how attentive you are to us, Shelley, in answering our minuscule little questions, but at this time, we'd like to recommend that they be approved. Thank you.
All right, we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Holman.
I second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Yes, the consent agenda involves the minutes of several meetings passed. It also has the claim vouchers in a total amount of $3,847, and the payroll vouchers in the total amount of $2,199. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business, so we will move to resolutions. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 5402, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, approving the 2019 Stormwater Management Program Plan and authorizing the mayor to provide the program plan and the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Western Washington, Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit Annual Report for 2018 to the Washington State Department of Ecology.
Thank you, do we have a motion? Councilmember De Corsi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 5402.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Wales.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember De Corsi.
Thank you, Mayor. As the City Attorney stated, this is a resolution based upon the stormwater permit that's issued by the Washington State Department of Ecology, and it's also compliant with Federal Water Pollution Control Act, the Clean Water Act. And this permit requires a public hearing, which we held on March 4th, and this resolution authorizes the adoption of the Stormwater Management Program for, Plan for 2019, and it has an inclusion of the submission of the Municipal Stormwater Permit 2018 and a report to the Washington State Department of Ecology.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution number 5402, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5412, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute a fourth amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Auburn and the Central Puget Sound Regional Transit Authority.
Thank you, do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
Yes, move to adopt Resolution number 5412.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I second that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman.
Yes, this resolution deals with authorizing you to execute the Fourth Amendment to a lease agreement between the City of Auburn and Central Puget Sound Regional Transit Authority. It concerns the parking garage, the plaza, and some of the rooms therein.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution number 5412, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5413, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, amending Section B5 franchise agreements fees of the current City of Auburn master fee schedule.
Thank you, do we have a motion? Councilmember Wales.
I move for the approval of Resolution 5413.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember De Corsi.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wales.
So this allows the city to update its master fee schedule, to collect fees for processing, renewing, and administering small wireless facilities, siting, and construction permit applications.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution number 5413, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have moved from the business portion of the meeting to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to give a short report on the watershed inventory area number nine, which I am a representative for the city. Found out today that there's going to be a recycling facility put in Enamclaw near the Green River Gorge. There's an uprising within environmentalists about having a recycling facility near a water body. So a letter was put together by the management of Ryanine today, and it was circulated around the management committee, which I'm on, the Ryanine Management Committee. The letter will be going to the Watershed Ecosystem Forum, and I've notified Jeff Tate today, and so he's in line with the mayor. And this is not a good plan on putting a recycling facility near a water body, and we all know about some of the recycling businesses in the Kent area, and it's polluted the Green River immensely. So it's not a good plan. There has been a $163 million invested in habitat improvements, right below Howard Hanson Dam, down through, and it all goes down into the Duamish River. So a federal, a federal government plan is in place whereby a fish passage is going to be constructed at the Howard Hanson Dam. It's been talked about for about 10 years or more, but everybody's getting serious now because of the fish depletion, orca population, et cetera. So I will, I will be following up on this and making a report later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
No report.
Councilmember Brown.
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I have a short one, and I am so glad that I was able to see what Chief Pearson brought to the council, because I had the opportunity to go to a workshop in National Leagues of City where it involved the Human Development Committee that I belong to, and also the Public Safety Committee. They had a chief that came to talk to the group about his department at Fairfax, Washington, DC, about the suicide that is happening within his department and also the fire department. So seeing what you did for our officers was really nice, and seeing the film brought awareness to me of what they showed us at this conference meeting, because we don't stop to think about what the stress level that our police officers have to deal with when there's a shooting, when there's fires, where there's accidents, disaster and deaths. They don't speak about, you know, they go in there and they do their job, and then they go back to work, and it's like nothing happened. But with them talking about, this chief decided to be very transparent on what's going on in his department. Also, they hired, HR hired a special counsel to come in and train these people and their families, just like our mayor Nancy talked about. Every day, these families are waiting at home for their families to come home safe. So we have to really think about what our fire department and our police officers are dealing with daily, and it was really, I went to the mayor immediately after this, this class that I went to, and I, I was going to ask her to do exactly what you did to, you know, honor our police officers on the duties and the good jobs that they do for our cities. So we had a full schedule from Sunday until Wednesday evening, and believe me, you guys get your money's worth out of me, because I work very hard going to these meetings and coming back home to try to do things for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wales.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Corsi.
Thank you, Mayor. On March 6th, I attended the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting in Olympia, and although we had a very long agenda, the majority of our meeting was spent reviewing the legislative bills and issues that surround the priorities established by the Ahab, by the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. And just going to touch on just a couple of them really quick. One, as most of us are aware of, we've been pushing really hard for a condominium liability reform act, and the one bill, Senate Bill 5334, has passed the Senate. It's now in the hands of the House, and they're actually reviewing it right now. It actually needs to be moving forward a bit faster in the House than it did in the Senate, but we're still looking forward optimistically that we're going to see some bill that will give us some relief on this. And what this will do is it will hopefully incentivize developers to build condominiums as affordable housings. Right now, with the laws as they're written, the liabilities that developers face, they refuse to do it unless you're buying a condominium that's worth about a million dollars. So we want to get some of these down for the more affordable housing. So we want to get some of these down for the more affordable groups as well. So we talked about a number of different bills. There's some things we looked at this year, trying to look at incentives for cities. We're not really seeing any incentives being developed by the legislature, but they're giving us items like allowing us to increase our sales taxes, to use REIT II for supporting affordable housing and homelessness. So not a lot of incentives, but different options that they're providing right now. But I think the interesting thing is that last time we reported on what's going on in the state legislature, there was about 1,900 bills that were introduced. That number's now up to about 2,850. So out of that, there's only about 120 or so that have been signed by the governor. So not going to see all 2,850 bills pass, but we're seeing some real good opportunities to do moving things forward on the affordable housing side of what's going on in the legislature. And a lot of our legislatures do get the message that we need more affordable housing in our communities overall. Then lastly, on March 14th, I attended the senior coffee hour, and Carol was here, was there that day. And we had a small group, but we had a very lively group, a lot of good discussion, and we actually spent an hour and a half together. So it was a nice day and just a really good group of people, and we talked a lot about the issues, including what's going on in the city, the financial aspects of what we're facing in the city, and how to address those, and then, of course, the housing issues that we always constantly talk about. So I want to thank the folks that were there, and it was a very enjoyable morning, and really appreciated them attending. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just briefly, I attended an Emergency Management Advisory Committee meeting last week, and basically the big topic there was snowmageddon and the snow responses that occurred in February. And they're trying to gather information from all the cities that were involved, had activities going on, to try to get what their city's takeaways are, and gathering information. And they're going to the Sound Cities Association, better known as SCA, which we're a member, are gathering up these amounts of comments that are coming in from all the cities, and I hope to get with our emergency management folks and the police and the fire representatives to find out exactly some of the occurrences that we experienced here in our city, so we can share that information. And I think that a lot of this will come down to an aggregate of lessons learned and how we can maybe perhaps, God forbid, we have another incident like that, but hopefully the weather's warming up now, and we won't see any more of that. So that's basically what we have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So on Tuesday, March 5th, we welcomed a group of students that are attending Green River College and Clover Park Technical College from our sister city in China, Guanhan. They are here studying aviation, and so we like to welcome them in and answer the questions that they might have about our city and talk about the studies that they are pursuing. And then typically, once they receive their degree, they go home and they work in the aviation field in Guanhan or in the surrounding areas. So it's always great to have our Green River students come in for a visit and realize that Green River has one of the largest populations of international students in the area. And so the diversity that that brings to our community is very valuable. And then on the 7th, I met with King County Councilmember Claudia Balducci to discuss the upcoming potential parks levy, a few items about that levy. So it is a renewal of a current levy that's in place in King County, but there are also some additions to that. And so we, as a city, had a few concerns, and Councilmember Balducci was kind enough to host a few of us from Sound Cities Association to discuss some of those issues. Let me just give you a few of the overall funding highlights. $277 million for operations and maintenance of King County parks, and that's increased from $274 million in the current levy. $154 million for regional trails projects, increased from $115 million in the current levy. $131 million for open space acquisition, up from $63 million in the current levy. $44 million for active recreation repair and renovation, up from $27 million. $60 million for city pass-through, that's up from $29 million under the current levy, which would be beneficial for the city of Auburn, because that's clearly doubling the amount of funding that goes to the cities. When you consider that a majority of the tax dollars that are levied for this park's ballot measure are from cities themselves, sometimes what we pay in is not what we get out at the direct local level. However, when you consider the impacts on King County itself, and where some of that funding goes to some of the more popular, larger King County parks and opportunities, but this is a good opportunity for an addition for cities. $36 million for Woodland Park Zoo, consistent with percentage of current levy of 5% of the total, and $8 million for the Seattle Aquarium Capital Project. And so we wanted to make sure with Councilmember Balducci that she heard from us that for the funding, if this parks levy passes, that we want greater flexibility in how the cities can spend the funding that's allocated to us, so that the restrictions are not there. We know in our cities what the needs are for parks, and there, in some cases, like park land that King County has transferred ownership to the city of Auburn, but it's undeveloped park land, we want to be able to utilize that funding to develop those parks and not have those restrictions placed upon it that we currently have. And so Councilmember Balducci was very open and interested in what we had to say and was willing to take some language forward to her fellow council members for their consideration. So we appreciate that a great deal. And then that night, I visited with the Des Moines City Council at their study session to discuss what Auburn has recently passed, when you passed the skip, or South King Housing and Homelessness Partners Interlocal Agreement, for South King County cities to work together on affordable housing and homelessness issues, and was able to clear up some areas of confusion for the Des Moines City Council, and they made a motion to bring it forward as an item for their own discussion and potential approval to join in that interlocal agreement. So we will have more cities joining us in that proposition. So very excited about that. And then traveled to Washington, DC, along with fellow council members Holman, Trout Manuel, and Pelosi. And I am the chair of the Core Transportation Committee, which is a subcommittee of Transportation and Infrastructure Services Committee. And at National League of Cities this year, the main focus is on infrastructure. And so there is a lot of work to be done at our level and at the national level. Couple of the items that are the top priorities coming out of our committee, it's to authorize at least six years of transportation program and funding, so there's a stabilization for cities to be able to count on that funding to improve infrastructure. Also enabling more local control. That's really critical for us. We know that our MPOs are Metropolitan Planning Organizations, ours is the Puget Sound Regional Council. We don't always score well in those competitions, right? So the opportunity to have more local funding available, and not at the state level, not at the MPO level, but some direct funding for cities, is something that we find to be very attractive. And also what we're calling rightsizing, if you will. So previous administrations focused on urban areas for funding. The current administration is focusing more on rural areas. Well, we are neither, actually, and so we don't fit most of those grant activities and opportunities. And so the goal is to ensure that while, as Ingrid mentioned tonight, Councilmember Trout Manuel, that tiger grants, we don't typically qualify for those, there should be funding mechanisms available for cities of our size and projects of our size, so that we can move our infrastructure forward as well. And so a lot of work yet to be done, but I'm looking forward to that work. And I want you all to know that your council members who attend National League of Cities, and they all work on different committees, do a great deal of work for you, advocate for our city, for you, and also work collaboratively to understand the needs of the entire nation. And that is no small feat. And so hopefully, you can appreciate the time, and there is an expense to the city, of course, for this travel, but hopefully, you can appreciate what goes into our council members and myself being a part of these organizations to ensure your voice is heard nationally, as well as regionally and at the state level. And last, I want to remind everyone and invite everyone that Wednesday night, March 20th, is our State of the City address. It will be at the Auburn Avenue Theater. Doors open at 5:30 for a social time, and then our presentation will begin at 6:00 PM. We hope you can attend. We will be looking at the successes, as well as the challenges that we faced in 2018, as well as looking forward to 2019, and what you can expect of us and what we're going to be asking of you. And so we hope you will join us. Mr. City Attorney, do we have need of a closed or executive session this evening?
No, Mayor.
All right. In that case, we are adjourned. Thank you.